Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission Meeting of July 22, 2024. Now call the meeting to order, and if we'd all rise, we'll stay the Pledge of Allegiance together.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you, everyone. Anna, voice roll call, please. Present.
Vice Chair Toller.
Here.
Commissioner Rojas.
Present.
Commissioner Zick.
Here.
Commissioner Andrade is absent. Commissioner Klepak.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
All right, thank you, Anna. And I will note, I believe that Commissioner Andrade will be joining us for the second item this evening. I see no announcements or presentations this evening, which brings us to matters not listed on tonight's agenda. So if you'd like to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to come to either podium, and you'll have three minutes. All right, seeing no one in chambers, Anna, do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Now close public comments and move on to Planning Commission comments and suggestions, starting with Commissioner Rojas.
I have none for today.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Zick.
Nothing tonight.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Martinez? You can come sit over here if you want to make your comments. Oh, there you go.
The mouse works, but not the touchscreen.
Okay.
Anyways, I do have comments. First, the city will host some community meetings regarding the Fairview Developmental Center on Wednesday and Thursday of the next two weeks. So I will be attending, since I haven't had the chance to give my own comments about those issues. I know the rest of the Planning Commission has, so I'm excited to attend. So I encourage members of the public to also attend. Constance in the Park is also going on tomorrow and next Tuesday. I'll also be there. And finally, for Public Works, the lights on the Joanne Street Trail and the Cornerstone Trail are all out. They are either removed or they're off. So hopefully, we can get that fixed so that bike riders can be able to see the trail at night. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Commissioner Klepak?
Nothing for me.
All right, Vice Chair Toller?
No comments.
No comments? Okay. I think I have just one comment this evening. I think Commissioner Martinez did a good job giving everyone a rundown on what's coming up, which is to say, a lot. But I was in an email chain the other day with city staff and noticed that our previous head of transportation in Public Works, Jennifer Rosales, has since left the city. And it was, I was kind of, I'm not going to lie, I was a little bit heartbroken. She was a wonderful addition to a lot of the work that we did through the years. We got to pepper her with some pretty complicated questions, to which she gave some exceedingly good answers. So I never got to say goodbye to Jennifer before she left, but I really do wish her well, and she's a wonderful, wonderful public servant, and I think she's going to continue doing great things elsewhere. So I just wanted to say that. So thanks, Jennifer. And with that, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. I see we have one consent calendar item tonight. We mentioned that all matters that are listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the Planning Commission staff or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for discussion. Items removed from the consent calendar will be discussed and voted upon immediately following Planning Commission action on the remainder of the consent calendar. And if you would, Anna, please read the title of Consent Calendar Item Number One.
Consent Calendar Item Number One: Minutes. June 24, 2024, unofficial meeting minutes.
All right, thank you. Colleagues, do you have any comments on the minutes? All right, seeing none. Do you have a motion? Motion made by Vice Chair Toller. What is your motion, Vice Chair?
I have to approve the minutes.
All right, I'll go ahead and second that. Any comment?
No.
Me neither. Anna, if you'd please call the question.
That motion carries 6-0.
All right, thank you. That brings us to public hearings. We have two public hearing items tonight. And Anna, if you'd please read the title for public hearing item number one, I appreciate it.
Public Hearing Item Number One: Ordinance Adoption for a First Amendment DA-20-05 to the Automobile Club of Southern California Development Agreement DA-94-01 to allow for a 20-year time extension that would expire October 31, 2044, to amend provisions pertaining to the rate and methodology for calculating traffic impact fees and to amend provisions related to the setbacks of the future parking structure located at 3333 Fairview Road. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the Commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
All right, thank you, Anna. Before we go into ex parte, thank you for reading that very long title. I think we should give you a raise just for reading that long title. Colleagues, any ex parte to report, starting with Commissioner Martinez?
Yes, I met with the applicant on site on July 17.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Klepak?
Yes, I met with the applicant and the representative last Friday, the 19th.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rojas?
I have none.
Okay, Commissioner Zick?
I met with the applicant's management team on site last week.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair?
I had a Zoom call with the applicant and the representatives on last Friday.
Okay, thank you. And I held a couple of calls with the applicant's representative as well. And I'll now turn it over to our Mr. Aldana to present the item. Mr. Aldana?
Good evening, Chair Erath and Commissioners. I'm Christopher Aldana, Assistant Planner with the Economic and Development Services Department. The project site is located north of South Coast Drive, east of Susan Street, and west of Fairview Road. Sunflower Avenue, which is located north of the site, separates the city of Costa Mesa from the city of Santa Ana. The project site consists of two parcels that are bisected by the Greenville Banning Channel. The project site is designated Urban Center Commercial and is Zone Planning Development Commercial.
We're getting ahead of ourselves tonight.
There you go.
That looks great.
All right, thank you. Sorry about that.
No, no problem.
The larger parcel located east of Channel Street is 29.5 acres in size and is improved with a four-story, 310,000-square-foot processing center, a two-story, 130-square-foot service building, a one-story, 27,000-square-foot satellite building, and a 235,000-square-foot Phase 1 office building for an approximate 702,825 square foot total. The smaller parcel is 9.7 acres in size and is used as a surface parking lot. Adjacent to and north of the smaller parcel is a residential community developed in 2003. This residential property is zone medium-density planned residential development and consists of detached single-family homes, attached townhomes, and condominiums. Located east of the subject property is, across Fairview, is a medium-density planned residential development zone property that is developed with a residential neighborhood consisting of two-story detached single-family homes called the Wimbledon Village. The property located to the south, across South Coast Drive, is designated for commercial use and is planned development commercial, PDC. This property is a component of the Seagerstrom Home Ranch Development, which is entitled for future office space and a new fire station. To the west, across Susan Street, is a 13.78-acre site that is currently improved with a multi-tenant office building and sports field previously used by Los Angeles Chargers. The city is currently processing a planning application to redevelop the site with a 1,050-unit apartment complex known as Hive Live. AAA requests the following revisions to the development agreement. One, change the expiration year from 2024 to 2044. This will extend the development agreement for an additional 20 years, commencing on November 1, 2024, and terminating on October 31, 2044. Two, update the average daily vehicle trip ADT multiplier from .00718 to .00989. This change reflects the current Institute of Transportation Engineers' trip generation factor for office land uses. Three, update the traffic impact fee from 228 to 235, or the current rate at the time of development, whichever is less. This change is necessary to reflect the city's current adopted fee. Four, specify that the Phase 2 parking structure shall be proposed a minimum of 60 feet from the existing residential uses located to the north of the smaller parcel to improve land use compatibility. And five, other non-substantive numbering references and/or formatting edits to clarify intent and implement the proposed changes. The 1994 entitlements include a 500,000-square-foot expansion that was planned to occur in two phases. Each phase was to consist of an approximate 250,000-square-foot building. Additionally, a floor-level, 1,840-space parking structure is approved on the adjacent 9.7-acre parcel. To date, AAA has completed Phase 1 improvements, which totaled 235,825 square feet of the 500,000-square-foot expansion. Additionally, the 9.7-acre parcel to the west, which was, which has a driveway along Susan Street...
Chris, Mr. Aldana?
Mind if I just stop for just a moment?
I'm going to have to step out due to a conflict of interest that I wasn't previously aware of before. So I'm going to hand it over to the Vice Chair, and then you can continue your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additionally, the 9.7-acre parcel to the west, which has a driveway along Susan Street, has been improved and is utilized as a surface parking lot for the AAA employees. The remaining Phase 2 improvements are shown in yellow shading. The proposed First Amendment to the Development Agreement is consistent with the general plan policies and objectives, primarily Objective LU6C, in that the long-term buildout of the AAA office campus will support the retention and expansion of the city's employment base with diverse and quality employment opportunities. Additionally, the city land use element specifies that the Urban Center Commercial Land Use District is intended to allow for high-intensity, mixed-use commercial development within a limited area, and identifies that one of the four major developments located within the Urban Center Commercial Land Use District is the Automobile Club of Southern California. The proposed development is also compatible with the existing land uses located north of the Interstate 405, which includes larger developments such as South Coast Plaza, Metro Point, IKEA, Seagerstrom Center for the Arts. Lastly, AAA has operated from this site since 1980 without any impacts to surrounding uses, including the nearby residential developments. This AAA headquarters has operated at this site since 1980, and there have been no incompatibilities with the surrounding uses. The proposed use, size, and intensity of the project is consistent with the existing development within the general area located north of the 405 freeway and would not be detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. There are no modifications proposed to the sites previously entitled Development, Intensity, and only minor considerations are proposed to improve the site's physical layout to avoid potential impacts to nearby residential development. As such, the extension of the DA will not be detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare, or adversely affect the orderly development of property or the preservation of property values. Staff has reviewed the applicant's request and has found that the proposed changes make for insignificant modifications to the previously approved development agreement. The scope of work does not differ from that previously approved development agreement and is consistent with the general plan policies and objectives, primarily Objective LU6C, in that the long-term buildout of the AAA office campus will support the retention and expansion of the city's employment base. Furthermore, the proposed use, size, and intensity of the project is consistent with the existing development within the general area located north of the 405 freeway and would not be detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. Staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to find that the final environmental impact report is still valid. Pursuing TESCA guidelines Section 15162, this project remains within the scope of the June 20, 1994 Certified Final Environmental Impact Report. For the AAA expansion project, the effects of the project were examined in the '94 FEIR, and all feasible mitigation measures and alternatives developed in the '94 EIR are incorporated into this project, and no new mitigation measures are required. Therefore, the '94 FEIR for AAA expansion project is determined to be adequate to serve as the environmental documentation for this project. No further environmental review is required, and all the requirements of SEQA are satisfied. Staff also recommends approval of the First Amendment DA 2005 to the Automobile Club of Southern California Development Agreement 9401 by adopting an ordinance to allow a 20-year time extension until October 31, 2044, to amend provisions pertaining to the rate and methodology for calculating traffic impact fees and to amend provisions related to the setbacks of a future parking structure. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Aldana. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Mr. Martinez?
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Let's start. So I guess the first question I want to ask is usually with some of the items that come before us, like the next one, if you don't get a CUP, you're just not going to be able to do it. Without a development agreement, i.e., if this were to expire without having been renewed, what would the approval process be for a new parking structure, a new office building, and the proposed second bridge over the flood control channel?
So if the application were new, they would have to reapply to meet all of the current development standards and code requirements, and I believe a project of this scale requires a master plan.
Okay. So, okay. Let's see. For this extension request, specifically the extension, did staff look at the proposed Class 1 trail along the flood control channel that is next to this site? Was there any talk about that during this process?
There wasn't. There wasn't any talks about the flood control trail, only because the DA had already been approved, and when originally proposed to us, it was simply a time extension. What we really captured in our, you know, just going back and forth with the applicant, was making sure that the traffic impact fees were updated and also that the multiplier was updated. Did you...
So Commissioner Martinez, one of the other reasons, and probably more of a driving factor, is that the general plan already identified the bike one, or excuse me, the Class 1 bicycle trail on the Greenville Banning Channel. So it was already something that's kind of on our radar screen as an improvement that we would like to see in the future. But the time request that Chris was referring to, which the applicant submitted to us to initiate this entire thing, is not something that staff felt would be an impediment towards the attainment or the achievement of putting a Class 1 trail in that flood control area in the future. So we didn't see that there was a conflict. There was an existing development, subject to a development agreement, they're requesting a time extension. We saw an opportunity to update some provisions of that development agreement from 30 years ago to today's standards, so that's what we countered back with them on a couple of those terms. But the, I think it was, you know, the placement of a Class 1 trail on the Banning Channel was something that we didn't feel needed to be addressed, because it's already identified in the general plan as a longer-term improvement, and the request that AAA was asking for now was not something that was going to either change the ability for that to go there or interfere with the ability for it to go there.
Okay. So because none of the proposed improvements to the site would conflict with that Class 1 trail?
Much better way of saying it, but yes.
Okay. Okay. Let's see. What other requirements does the parking structure have? I know right now we're saying, let's put a 60-foot setback. What other requirements are there?
So the original development agreement does include height limitations, so it calls out that it cannot exceed 30 feet in height. It defines that that measurement should be from grade to the top of the parapet. It delineates how many, or it calls out how many parking spaces should actually be on the parking structure. Other than that, it leaves within this envelope of development so that it can be moved around, because at the time that it was approved, that parcel to the north of the smaller parcel, it was undeveloped. It was just agricultural land. So there was, you know, there was a lot of thought put into the development in regards to what might be there in the future. And so originally, you know, there was like caveats in the development agreement that said, if it remains agriculture, if it's not residential, it could be 20 feet away from this property line, but if it turns out to be residential, then it should be 60 feet away. But it's within that development agreement that they're allowed to construct this parking structure, but it doesn't add any more information besides that. The idea is that staff would review it to make sure it complies with all the development standards once they get into plan check.
Okay. The parking structure, is the location set? Like, they wouldn't be able to change it unless they go through that master plan process?
I don't think I would be that strict with the interpretation, to be honest with you. I think the development agreement establishes an envelope, as Chris was saying, there's height, number of stories, there's a minimum setback away from that north property line. But I think if they wanted to, we could push it farther away. It's just that I think because of the development agreement, we as staff need to abide by the provisions of that, but if the applicant were to propose more, and it was something that didn't lessen the minimum requirements, that we would be okay with that.
But nothing like moving it to the other 29-acre parcel?
That would probably be considered a little more significant. There's language within the development agreement that does talk about how we would process that, and basically, a lot of those changes would remain as minor modifications at a staff level. So there may be a small process they would have to go through, but nothing that would require them, in my opinion, to come back before the Planning Commission. It's just whether or not there's kind of a staff level approval before they could go immediately into plan check.
Okay. Or not. Okay. I didn't get a chance to read the EIR. So I have a few questions, I have a question related to that, and then I have questions about the parking structure as it relates to the general plan. So first, does the parking structure or the parking use on that nine-acre parcel have any environmental impact on water quality, since the flood control channel is right there?
So not that I recall reading about in the environmental impact report that was done. Obviously, there is proximity. At the time that construction happens, they would be subject to all of today's current construction requirements. So there would be, you know, things to control, you know, runoff from the property, sandbags or other things like that would need to be placed around the perimeter to ensure that any water that does tend to flow in that direction is going to go through some sort of cleaning type of process to make sure it's cleaner before it may dispense into that channel or flow into that area. But the document itself, I don't think went into that kind of detail 30 years ago.
Okay. Let's see. For general plan, I reread it today, so I'm just going to ask questions using general plan language. Is the parking a revenue-generating land use?
To my knowledge, it's not, but that might be a question better asked of the applicant.
Okay. Does adding new parking, I think it's 700 new parking stalls, roughly, does adding new parking reduce reliance on the automobile?
My recollection was that the new parking is provided in order to meet the minimum requirement, or in order to meet the requirements of the zoning code at the time, not necessarily to reduce the demand for the single-occupant vehicle.
Okay. Does adding a new parking structure make this site more pedestrian-oriented?
It does not, but it is something that is, because it's addressed through a development agreement, it is kind of a contractual obligation, relationship between the city and the applicant. They have the right to build the parking structure if they want under that agreement.
Would adding more parking, more, 700 more parking stalls, encourage or discourage driving to the site?
At a theoretical level, I think the answer is, you would assume it would induce more driving to the site, but AAA, I believe, has some transportation demand management programs that they either have implemented or maybe continue to implement, and I believe the applicant team from AAA can address some of those specifics for you.
Our Public Works Director, Rajah Sethrothman, is also in the audience, and he can answer some of the trip demand questions as well. He was involved with the project we spoke earlier about, and he might have some information to add to your questions and policies.
Sure. Yes.
So Commissioner Martinez, so the parking requirements, again, are based on the formulas that are, you know, per square footage, there is so much requirement of parking. If in the future, if there is a change in how people approach the site or how they use this particular site, there would be reconsideration of the parking needs. So when, for example, when this project first came forward, you know, I got involved in 2000, when we had recalculated trip generation, they did have a good, robust traffic demand management program that they want to implement, and we gave them credit for that initially. But then when we did the traffic counts, three years later, we found that the actual number of trips are higher than what was estimated. So we had to go back and readjust the traffic impact fee calculation. So in a similar way, if in the future, the trips do go down, because there are many factors. I mean, there could be work-from-home opportunities, there could be other reasons why traffic could go down to the site, we'll definitely come back and adjust it, and that would reflect back on the parking demands, too.
Okay. Okay. All right, Commissioner Martinez, you mind if we open it up for some other commissioners? One last question, and I'm done. In the development agreement, I think it's page 38, I don't know, it's very messy, and it's written over with Roman numeral four and an 11. The other side is, yeah, Assistant Director Jacken has it. Is this page 38 from, what is this from? Is this from the EIR?
Yes.
Okay. Those are all my questions.
All right. Anybody else? Commissioner Klepak?
Yeah, I just wanted to dig a little deeper on something that Commissioner Martinez hit on. You had mentioned that under the current development agreement, they could build to those codes that were in place at that time. And so if this were to get moved ahead, does that apply to all codes, like building energy codes, everything? Okay, what specifically?
It would apply to more of the planning and the zoning codes, or the ones that are kind of locked into or frozen in time. But it's very typical. But it's very typical, especially from a safety standpoint, that they would have to meet all of the current building and safety codes.
Okay. And energy codes. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody on that side of the dais? All right. Well, then I will, thank you, Mr. Sethrothman. We'll open up the public hearing and ask whether the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to come up and ask you to state your name for the record and answer whether you've read the staff report and the conditions of approval and whether you agree with him.
Sure. Anita Lores Villagraña, V I L L A G R A N A. And yes, I have read them.
All right.
Great. Good evening, Vice Chair Toller and Planning Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Anita Lores Villagraña and my family and I have lived in Costa Mesa for over 20 years. I have the privilege of serving as the Public Affairs Traffic Safety and Community Programs' Manager for the Auto Club of Southern California here in Costa Mesa at our administrative offices. The Auto Club is proud to be part of the city of Costa Mesa. Whether it is our environmental responsibility programs or traffic safety programs such as impaired driving, teen driving, senior mobility, bike and pedestrian safety programs or other initiatives, we are dedicated to the community we serve. And our Costa Mesa facility plays a key role in everything we do as an organization. I am here this evening to ask for your support for the time extension of our development agreement. As you know, the Auto Club has a strong history of careful planning, working with the city to ensure job growth and economic expansion here in Costa Mesa. We have completed the first phase of our approved development agreement that allowed for additional office and warehouse space at our facility. Our request for a time extension will provide our staff and facility professionals with the needed time to carefully plan and deliver the remaining facility enhancements that will continue to attract employees to both work and for some, live in our great city. With the consolidation of other Auto Club work sites as well as adjustments coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic, this extra time will help ensure that our development applications that will come before the commission and the city council will not only meet the needs of the Auto Club, but the city and residents as well. As the largest employer in Costa Mesa, we're extremely proud of the positive relationships we have, not only with the city, but with our employees, our neighbors and residents of Costa Mesa. To that end, this 20 year extension will provide the Automobile Club and the city of Costa Mesa with the assurance that the project will adhere to the requirements of the current agreement and provide that certainty to adjacent property owners and neighborhoods. While tonight is solely about the timeline extension, once we have the final site plan for this phase of our development, we will submit it to the city for required environmental review process. We are looking forward to working with the city, community members, the neighboring property owners and other stakeholders to ensure what is ultimately constructed is an asset not only for the Auto Club, but also for the surrounding community. I want to thank city staff for their support of our time extension request and working to get our request before you tonight. Once again, on behalf of the Automobile Club of Southern California, I respectfully request your support of a time extension and I, along with members of our legal and facilities team, are here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Commissioners, you want to, we might have some questions for you, Ms. Villagraña. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Zick?
I've got just one question I should have asked the team when I met with them. What other cities, in what other cities do you have facilities that you are contemplating the possibility of vacating and consolidating in Costa Mesa?
I'll have to bring up our facilities team that can answer that a little better.
Okay. Sorry, Jason.
Yeah, there's no definite plans to vacate any major city or any of our regional. We're definitely reviewing, you know, performance and trying to consolidate into the Costa Mesa facility as much as we can. But nothing's been determined to vacate facilities.
Okay. And I accept that. My question is, in what other cities do you have facilities that you may contemplate at some point vacating as part of your consolidation?
Yeah, we have a large presence in Los Angeles, Long Beach. We have regional facilities all over Southern California, so it's kind of case by case. Our claims operations has grown quite a bit in Costa Mesa and more of our professional and IT folks have grown in Costa Mesa. So we think we'll continue to grow in that location and maintain staff at other regional locations.
Okay. I accept that. Thank you.
Commissioner Martinez? Thank you. Let's see. I wanted to ask first, how does a pedestrian or a cyclist access your site and how will that change in final build out? I know I went there by bike, so.
We currently have access in the space from the public right of way through where the bus stop is, transportation, but that's currently the only public path from the sidewalk.
How do you use, do you have key cards? Because I know you have to check in through security there. So is it like a key card and that opens the door?
Yeah, our employee badge accesses that gate as well.
Okay. Proposed, oh, what am I asking? Okay. Yes. Proposed site plans include a second bridge over the flood control channel. Is that still what you would want to do with this?
Yeah, we would look at measures to reduce traffic where pedestrians or in this case our employees will walk. We haven't contemplated that far along, whether that's still relevant, but it'll be part of the, you know, permitting process to ensure that's part of the project.
Okay. The expanded office building would encompass the current security area, the checkpoint at the front driveway. Do you have any idea as to where you might put that checkpoint?
It actually doesn't. It comes out into the parking lot area, kind of where the round, kind of the curved drop off area.
Hmm. So it would, it would, it would stay there, that checkpoint?
Yeah, the main entrance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Interesting. The site plans in the staff report didn't exactly make that clear. I thought it was just basically almost a T intersection right when you go in and you can't go for it.
Yeah, maybe referring to the employee entrance, maybe the back entrance.
Probably, yes. That's probably what I'm doing.
Yeah, that would still remain there as well, in between the buildings.
Okay. I think those are all my questions. All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Okay. I will now open the public comments. If you would like to speak to this item, please approach the podium. If you're on Zoom, use the raise hand option. If you're joining the meeting on your phone and would like to speak, please press star nine. There's see, nobody in the chambers. Anna, anybody on Zoom?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman.
All right. In that case, I'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing. And commissioners, any other questions for staff or the applicant? I think we're out of questions. Okay, Commissioner Zick?
So I've got one question for staff. And I'm quite certain you're not going to be able to answer it tonight. But since the result of our decision tonight simply is a recommendation to counsel, I would like to have the answer to my question prior to counsel considering this item, if it's possible. The question relates to information on page 41, which records the decision by the Planning Commission back in 1994. The EIR, General Plan Amendment, Tenanted Parcel Map, all of these items were subject to separate motions, each of them passed, with one exception, and that exception was a development agreement. And that did not pass because of a tied two-two vote. And I'm curious about why it didn't pass. And I'm particularly curious because one of the planning commissioners who voted against it, Ms. Cowan, later became mayor of the city. And so I have a tremendous amount of respect for her, her knowledge and opinion, although I don't know what the basis of her decision was here. I'd like to know what that was. And had I had more time and thought of this earlier, I might have reached out to her directly myself. If you have a way of finding that information out, I'd love an answer prior to a council meeting.
I think I can give you an answer now if you're ready for it.
I'd love it.
So we, we do, we did find the minutes from that meeting, so we have them here. Happy to share them with you after the meeting if you want to see. But in summary, there were two people who voted against the development agreement back in 1994. One was Mr. Corondo, the other was Ms. Cowan. Mr. Corondo expressed concerns that the development agreement did not go far enough in his, his estimation. He was quoted several times, but kind of all in the same vein of that comment. The, probably the biggest thing that he raised was he thought that AAA should do more to contribute funds towards the I-405 freeway access at that point in time. Ms. Cowan expressed a concern about the provision within the development agreement dealing with assignment, which me, and she went on to clarify that we, as part of the overall package of approvals, we were modifying the general plan at the time. She was concerned that AAA could take the approval package and then sell everything, everything to a third party, not knowing who that third party would be. And then the city would not have the ability to sit down with that new owner and negotiate something that the city might have felt would be more appropriate. So that, in summary, is the issue that led both Mr. Corondo and Ms. Cowan to voting no. Obviously, there were two other votes in support. A tie vote means that it was failed. And then at the, at the time, the recommendation was just forwarded to the city council for final action with a no recommendation.
I didn't give you much time to prepare an answer to that question, Bill. And I am really impressed with your.
Sometimes you luck out.
Yeah. Thank you very much. That answers my question.
All right. Is that all? Okay. In that case, I will close the public hearing and bring the discussion up here for a motion. Thoughts or motion, anybody? Mr. Martinez? Okay. So, yeah, I would like to move to approve the staff recommendation with the following modifications. First, the parking structure is not approved pursuant to land use element policy 5.6, 5.7, 6.13, circulation element, element policy 4.9, 5.5, 7.33, 9.5, 11.3, and noise element policy 2.8, all of which I can read into the record if so requested by another commissioner. Number two, the applicant and the city and possibly the county, acting as the Orange County Flood Control District, will work together towards the building of a class one multipurpose trail along the flood control pursuant to circulation element policy 5.7, 7.4, 7.5, 9.2, and 9.12. And third, pedestrian access will be provided to the site pursuant to circulation element policy 5.13 and 11.7. And number four, more bike parking will be added upon full build out pursuant to circulation element policy 9.4. That is my motion. We'll wait for a second. Okay. I don't think that motion passed, so we'll clear the board.
Vice Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Commissioner Zick.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the staff recommendation and approve what is in front of us, which is to find that pursuant to SEQA guidelines 15162, that the project is within the scope of the 1994 certified EIR. That the effects of the project were examined, all feasible mitigation measures and alternatives developed are incorporated into this project, no new mitigation measures are required. And number two, adopt the resolution, I'm not reading it word for word, adopt the resolution recommending the city council approve of this first amendment, DA 2005, to the Automobile Club of Southern California Development Agreement by adopting an ordinance to allow for a 20-year time extension until October 31, 2024, and to amend the provisions pertaining to the rate and methodology for calculating traffic impact fees and to amend provisions related to the setback of a future parking structure.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Do we have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Rojas. Commissioner Zick, you have the floor.
So I moved to Southern California, specifically Costa Mesa, in 1980, when Automobile Club established their facility there. And as long as I've been in this city, they have been one of the stellar business entities in the city. There are a number of stellar business entities in the city. They're one of them. When I visited their facility last week, it was as shiny, as modern, as inviting, as if it had just been built and a ribbon had just been cut. I'm impressed with the quality of the maintenance and the appearance of the facility. I'm impressed with the inviting appearance, the employee amenities that they have modernized at that location. This is a class one facility that caters to the highest quality of employee. I think anybody who's had any interaction with the Automobile Club knows the kind of service, the kind of reputation, the kind of company they are. This is a land use decision, but that's icing on the cake, to have that kind of a corporate entity in Costa Mesa. And I think honoring their development agreement and the work they've done so far and approving an extension so they can continue to consolidate employees here, as opposed to potentially relocating elsewhere, I think should be a top priority in this city. I enthusiastically recommend approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rojas?
I do, but first it's a question or slash comment for Commissioner Zick here. I saw, I was reading along with you, but I heard you say October 31, 2024. I wanted to clarify, we're saying October 31, 2044 for the record.
Correct. 2044.
Just want to make sure we're on the record correctly on that. I too second your opinions and views. I, I did receive an invitation to communicate with the applicant. Unfortunately, my schedule didn't allow, but I did have the opportunity to do my own research on AAA and I, I agree with everything that you just said, Commissioner Zick. Phenomenal company, excellent reputation. I saw, I found no reason or any, any complaints. And again, this is a land use policy decision here and I have no reason to not support it 100%.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Commissioner Martinez? Yeah. First, I'll ask if the maker of the motion is willing to condition the parking structure to be built in such a way as it would allow the conversion into housing at a future date after it is built?
No.
Okay. So, yeah, for all of the policies in the general plan that I listed out, I cannot support this motion. Adding more parking to this site, which is already a 9.7 acre parking lot, is quite frankly unacceptable. I, I just can't believe that in this huge site that is in a measure K parcel, we're just gonna say, hey, let's put more parking here. Let's put more storage for cars. That's, to me, that's not okay. And the access to the site, the, the trail along the site that is possible, I would have liked for that to be included. And for all these reasons, I can't support this motion. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Klebeck, any comments?
All right. So that leaves it to me. I am in support of the motion. I, let's see. I have, I share some sentiments of Commissioner Martinez. I know where he's coming from. I think this is generally beyond our pay grade. This is really an extension of a development agreement. This is going to city council. We're just making our recommendation. And it's really the extension of a development agreement. We're not really approving the site plan. We're not really approving the site plan, the design of the future improvements. And I think it's fair to think about those things because the findings for this have to do with land use and compatibility, and it's a different, it's a different area than it was in 1994. And so, it does make sense to pause 30 years after that original approval and say, does this still make sense? But what makes me feel better about that is in the original approval, I'm sorry, these page numbers are hard to read, but it's Section 3.7, it says, "Changes and amendments to existing development approvals. The parties acknowledge that refinement and further development of the project may require subsequent development approvals which change the existing development approvals. In an event that the owner finds that a change in the existing development approvals is necessary or appropriate, the owner shall apply for a subsequent development approval." Not a new development agreement, just a development approval to effectuate such change, and the city shall promptly process and act on such application in accordance with the existing land use regulations, except as otherwise provided by this agreement. And the only thing, design-wise, in this agreement is really just the setback from, the parking structure setback from what is now residential that wasn't back then, right? So, that, like I said, this is going to city council. It's above our pay grade, but I would hope that the applicant and the city council in 2041, a generation from now, would consider what the environment's like, that there's big projects coming in, and neighborhoods growing around that site, and consider whether the siting of those buildings, what the ground floor is going to be like, how it's going to engage with the street and accommodate pedestrians and bicyclists 20 years from now. I would hope that that would be considered. I don't see anything in the development agreement that we're looking at tonight that would preclude better designs than what was drawn up in 1994. So, that's why I feel comfortable with this motion. And with that, we'll have a roll call.
That motion carries 4-1 with Commissioner Martinez voting no and Commissioner Erath abstaining. Recused.
Well, that is approved, and unless repealed within seven days, that will go on to the city council. And that's that. And then we'll take a five-minute break for everybody to get their proper seats. Thank you.
Well, that is approved, and unless repealed within seven days, that will go on to the city council. And that's that. And then we'll take a five-minute break for everybody to get their proper seats. Thank you.
Same, just the invitation to attend open house.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Martinez?
Yes, I met with the applicant on-site on July 19.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kleebak?
Yes, I met with the applicant and their consultant on July 18.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair?
Like Commissioner Zick, I received an email inviting me to meet with the applicant. I've had any questions, but I didn't respond.
Okay, thank you. And I too received an email from someone on the applicant team, but didn't feel like I needed to meet anybody. So, with that, I'll go ahead and turn the item over to Ms. Halligan. Ms. Halligan, welcome.
Good evening, Chair Erath and Commissioners. I'm Michelle Halligan, Senior Planner with the Economic and Development Services Department. The item before you is a request for a conditional use permit to establish a retail cannabis storefront known as Med Leaf. To date, 11 cannabis storefronts have obtained the permits necessary to open. These are shown in green. At this time, 10 of the 11 are open. 12 of the 13 other approved CUPs are in the plan check process or under construction. Those are shown in purple. The project being presented tonight is outlined in blue. Med Leaf successfully completed the initial steps, including pre-application where the minimum separation requirements were verified, then the cannabis business permit application, before submitting the CUP application. If the CUP is approved, the applicant would next apply for building permits. The proposed storefront would be located at 2285 Newport Boulevard. The subject property is Zoned C2 General Business District. Other C2 zoned properties are located to the north, south, east, and west. There are local business and residentially zoned properties across Fairview Road and State Route 55. Here are some photos of the existing building. The top left is from Newport Boulevard, and the bottom right is from Fairview Road. This is the proposed site plan. As you can see, the existing car wash use would remain in place. The proposed cannabis storefront would be oriented towards Newport Boulevard and the 55 freeway. The applicant proposes to update the space to meet current building and safety codes, as well as update the facade with new doors and paint. Other proposed exterior improvements include improving the landscaping to include living ground cover and two 24-inch box-sized trees, four 25-gallon, and three 15-gallon trees, as conditioned, installing bicycle racks to encourage multimodal transportation, installing security lighting and surveillance cameras, and as conditioned, a photometric plan will be further reviewed during the plan check process. And a potential mural could be facing Newport Boulevard if approved. The proposed floor plan includes two major areas, the retail sales area shown in green and the employee-only area. The retail sales area also includes a lobby where customers will have their identification and age verified. The areas shown in red are access-controlled, meaning that only employees with proper security clearance are allowed to enter. All product loading and unloading would take place under video surveillance. The applicant provided a detailed business plan that was evaluated by the city's cannabis consultant. It is not attached to the staff report because it contains proprietary information. The business plan describes the owner's professional experience, proof of capitalization, and day-to-day operations, among other topics. The applicant also provided a professionally-prepared security plan. Costa Mesa's cannabis consultant determines that appropriate security measures were included to address both local and state requirements. There are more than 45 standard conditions of approval related to Measure Q uses. For example, odor control, onsite consumption is prohibited, there are age restrictions for both customers and employees, and there is a renewal process for a cannabis business permit every two years. The project would also be subject to a condition of approval requiring the planning commission to review any proposed murals prior to installation for compliance with cannabis regulations. Staff recommends that the planning commission find that, excuse me, adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, per SEQA Guideline Section 15301, Class 1, existing facilities, and approve Planning Application 21-28, subject to conditions of approval and code requirements. approve planning application 21-28, subject to conditions of approval and code requirements. The applicant's team has also prepared a presentation for the commission tonight. This concludes staff's presentation.
All right, thank you, Ms. Halligan. Appreciate it. Colleagues, do you have any questions for staff on this item, starting with Commissioner Zick?
Ms. Halligan, what condition of approval refers to that mural? I've hunted, I can't find it.
My apologies, Commissioner Zick. It's under the general conditions of approval. It's number 32, so let's flip through together and find it.
I found it, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Is it all Commissioner Zick? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Martinez?
Yes, thank you. I think this item is interesting because I get to role-play as three different commissioners at the same time. So first, planning. Does the applicant own the parcel?
Commissioner Martinez, my understanding is at this time that applicant does not own the parcel. I've been in communication with the current owner.
Okay. Second, the entrance on Newport Boulevard is, well, it's on Newport Boulevard, so it's a one-way. Is there any discussion about the right-to-an-only sign or having a, like, one-way sign on the opposite fence from the driveway?
Commissioner Martinez, at this time, we don't have a condition of approval related to that issue. It could be something that we couldn't explore, but we do have many properties, you know, along Newport that have that one-way situation. It seems like it's been dealt with on a case-by-case basis by the individual property owner.
Okay. I'll just ask Public Works also to look at that once it's, if it moves along, if it moves along. The site plan for this property has a fence between this property and Culture. What does Culture's site plan have for this, this boundary?
Commissioner Martinez, the proposed storefront at 2301 Newport did not include that fence, as it did not have to. They are separate properties, and they do not share parking. So in this case, Culture did not have it on their plans, but they're not required to also have it on their plans.
Yeah. Okay. And then the public comment we received from the Assistant League says that the three security guards for this, for this application, for the neighboring cannabis use, and for the one at the intersection of Fairview and Newport, could work together, the security guards could work together? Is that in the security plan? Is that allowed? Is that, I don't know?
Commissioner Martinez, in the security plan, they only address the needs of their particular site, so if they wish to have their security guards work together, that would be up to the individual operators. But we do want the security guards to remain on their property or within 50 feet, but that's something they could discuss privately that, you know, would not be part of our decision.
Yeah, okay. All right, Parks Commission questions. The four trees along Newport Boulevard make the sidewalk less than four feet in width. I know because that is my route to get here for every Planning Commission meeting, and I have to pass by that. So as I understand it, there are three different options for what to do with a tree. You could relocate the tree, you could build around the tree, or you could simply remove it. So first, I will go over to Mr. Yang. Is there a way to relocate these trees?
So Commissioner Martinez, could look at the situation, but in most cases, the Public Works has the discretion to remove the tree if need be, if it's diseased or if there's an issue with ADA compliance. So that's something that staff can look into with respect to the tree.
Would, would that just, I don't know, a more formal way to say this, would that just happen as a process that, now that you know this area has an ADA compliance issue? Will you go out and?
Well, staff can look and investigate the issue if there is significant ADA compliance issues. I mean, the sidewalk itself, in order to be ADA compliant, needs to be around four feet, that's the city standard. For federal regulations, it can be as narrow as three feet, but for city standards, it's the minimum for us is four feet in width, and that can be looked in vis-à-vis with the, with the tree that you're referring to.
Yeah, during my site visit, I actually brought a tape measure, so I measured it, and one of the, one of the trees was, had a two-foot-wide sidewalk right next to it. So hopefully staff can look into that, and...
So Commissioner Martinez, just quickly on your first question about relocating, these trees are not something that we would relocate. It's eucalyptus trees, you know, it's not, it's not considered something that we would go in that direction. They're really expensive to relocate, and these are not worth going through that effort. With respect to the sidewalk, yeah, we look at different options. One is we go around the tree, we work with adjacent property owners and see if we can get an easement for sidewalk easement, and a lot of times we do, you know, acquire the easement and we get the standard sidewalk that goes around the trees.
Okay.
And the worst case is we could remove the trees.
For either an easement or a removal, which my understanding is this would fall as a category one or a category-two tree removal, would that require any further action by discretionary body like Planning Commission, Parks Commission? Or could that be handled at the staff level?
This can be handled at staff level mainly because of the requirement that we want to have a sidewalk that meets our requirements.
Perfect. That is great to hear. And then Arts Commission questions. So what would have been the procedure for this mural should the applicant have informed us of their intention to paint a mural after the CUP was approved?
Commissioner Martinez, we always encourage our cannabis applicants to come to their CUP planner first, since it is a unique section of our local and state laws. So hopefully, they would come to their CUP planner first, and we could give the draft design a review, looking at issues in our code and issues in conditions of approval. If they, we found any issues, we'd have them remove them, and then they would apply on TESSA. That's our totally electronic self-service application. And at that point, our arts specialists would shepherd the project through their approval process.
Which would go to the Arts Commission?
Go to the Arts Commission.
So for an Arts Commission application, any other mural application, does the Arts Commission have the authority to refer a matter back to us? Like, not relating to cannabis exactly, but say, I don't know, a few weeks ago, we had the escape room, they have a blank wall next to their building that also has a CUP. If that escape room wanted to put a mural on their building, could they have also referred that back to us?
That would, my understanding is that would be really unusual because the Arts Commission makes recommendations for changes. I'm not aware of a process for them to refer it back to us, which is why I propose a condition of approval to have the mural go back to Planning Commission to look for specific cannabis issues that an Arts Commission would not be looking for.
Okay. Those are all of my questions.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Special thank you to Director Seth Arahman for being here. I mean, between you and your team, you are our community's foremost transportation-related expert, so thank you for sharing the evening with us. Anyone else? Commissioner Andrade?
So just to clarify, this project will require the installation of the, of a fence, right, between this business and then the one next to it, right?
Commissioner Andrade's staff is not requiring the fence, the applicant's proposing it, but they are not required to build it. The parkings, you know, it's not shared, but they've opted and they're designed to include it.
Right, and that's, and that's probably because, right, right now, you can drive right through that parking to go to, from Culture to potentially this business to the auto repair, like, you can drive right through it, so I imagine, but I can save that for the applicant. Just for, for education, I appreciate the map where you had the current dispensaries that are approved and how many are open. At what phase is Culture? Is that something you can disclose for this conversation?
Yes, it is. So Culture has been approved to open, and that was approved back in May. So they have a timeline by which they must open, or we can void the cannabis business permit.
Can you expand on what that process looks like? Is it a matter of, like, who opens first?
Oh, no. No, no, no. It's simply that they receive their cannabis business permit in May, and they have 160 days to open, or the cannabis business permit is void. So it's, it's not that another business would replace them, it's that we would revoke the cannabis business permit.
I see. And so on the time clock, what, what date are they at?
Well, they were, they were given the CBP in May, and it will, it could be void if they don't open by mid-November.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Vice Chair, do you have any thoughts? No? Okay. All right. Let me see if I have any questions here. Thank you, Ms. Halligan, and staff for your patience. Where are the current operating hours of the adjacent car wash? Do we know?
Chair Erith, the car wash is open from about 8:00 to 6:00.
8:00 to 6:00, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., okay. With the previous uses in the proposed storefront location, let's see, we have autoglass tinting, auto seal, smog testing, and auto repair. Was there any discussion with the applicant in regards to a Phase 1?
So staff had considered requiring a Phase 1, but we've decided to leave that up to the Planning Commission if you feel that that should be a condition of approval. Phase 1 site assessments do occur, you know, when a property is sold, where there've been auto uses such as this. They can occur when there's been a use change, but right now, I don't have a threshold to require it.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Halligan. Let me turn a few pages here, see if there's anything else. Page seven of the agenda stipulates, I guess it would be bottom of six, going into seven, about separation requirements, which, as you know, as many of us know, City Council amended the ordinance to account for certain externalities that were not taken into consideration when the ordinance was first made, but that applicants who had already been in the queue at a certain point were not subject to those changes. I do see that you show that, what is it, residential is within 215 feet from the subject property, but any buffer requirement does not apply because of being grandfathered in, is that correct?
Chair Erith, that is correct. The pre-application was reviewed well in advance of the amendment to cannabis ordinances.
Okay. Otherwise, if this applicant had come before us and had not reached that threshold, then they would be subject to the residential requirement.
So based on our process, a new pre-application that didn't meet the subject requirement would not be allowed to move on to the process.
Yeah, they wouldn't even get a hearing. Okay, thank you. Bottom of seven, and I would say elsewhere in the conditions of approval, it's talking about this idea of there being a mural, it going on to Arts Commission. I believe there's a catch-all in there that says if approved, and it goes on to Arts, Arts Commission, it will come back to planning for final review. Is that correct?
Chair Erith, that is correct. I provided that condition based on feedback from the last cannabis-related item.
Sure. Yeah, and I know we've had a couple up to this point. Okay. If we go to page nine, look under the, I believe it's the fifth bullet point, and I think it's elsewhere in, in the packet, too. It talks about onsite security. What do we know of PD and what they're requiring of this location as proposed?
Chair Erith, we do reach out to the police department during the process, and they've determined that a 24-hour security guard would not be necessary at this time, so they're comfortable with the hours of operation being the time when the security guard would be onsite. However, we do have in the ordinances that if there are issues, the chief of police can require 24-hour security at any time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Halligan. Let me turn a few more pages. I think I'll find something else for staff a little bit later, but unless any of my colleagues have further questions at this point, we'll move things along. Director Dropkin?
One note I wanted to mention that on page 13, there is a calculation for a traffic impact fee. That's incorrect. I just wanted to mention that. I didn't want the applicant to get a heart attack, and I'm sure it was an error in the editing version of the word document, but apologize for that. I just wanted to mention that.
Not a problem. I think some of us knew that, because that's like a triple-A size traffic impact fee right there.
So, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the correct value should be $28,900.
$28,900, yeah.
Thank you.
That makes a lot more sense, although $300,000 does look nice, so, okay, thank you. Right. Commissioner Martinez?
Relating to the security guards, the adjacent to cannabis sites, are they conditioned as 24-hour security guards?
Commissioner Martinez, the proposed storefront at 2301 Newport does have a condition of approval requiring a 24-hour security guard, because that was the requirement at the time of their review. And then down the block at 2275, they were also subject to the 24-hour requirement based on the timing of their application review.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Martinez, Ms. Halligan, maybe one spin-off question for you. It's my understanding that applicants who have been approved and fell under the 24-hour onsite security provision can petition the city to have that waived currently. Is that correct?
Chair Erith, that's correct. They can apply to amend their conditions of approval.
Sure. Otherwise, the 24-hour onsite stands unless they take action.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to come forward, and I think we know you, Mr. Maddox, but if you could tell us your, your name, if you read the staff report, the conditions of approval, and if you agree to them, sir.
Sean Maddox. I did read the staff report and conditions of approval, and we do accept them. I'm also here with Karen Hanawi, who I'm going to let start the presentation.
Great, thank you. Just one, one sec. Welcome, but just wait one sec.
My apologies. It says the file is damaged, so I'm going to try to re-upload it.
Okay. Well, Karen, you can tell us a story in the meantime, if you want, or a joke.
Well, here, I'll tell you my opening. So my name's Karen Hanawi, and I'm known as the brains of our operation. I run this company with my husband, George, who's the beauty of our operation. Michelle, do you have it yet?
I did request it several times today, though something's off with the file.
I have a thumb drive.
Oh, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah.
All right, your turn, Mr. Maddox. Tell us a joke.
That's why she's the brains of the operation.
I'm not going to joke, I'm an attorney, so. I'll take what we can get.
Yeah, I'll take what we can get. Any fun plans this weekend? Oh, wait, it's only Monday.
It works. Ready to go. Thank you so much for your patience.
Okay, you're off the hook from having to tell us jokes.
Okay. I already told you my first one. So in all seriousness, though, tonight, good evening, Planning Commission. George and I have been the owners and operators of Med Leaf Delivery in Oceanside, and after tonight, we hope to become the proud owner/operators of Med Leaf Costa Mesa. In 2020, during the height of the pandemic, George and I opened the doors to Med Leaf, our patients' doorsteps, after witnessing the positive impacts cannabis had on my younger brother, Justin, a U.S. Army veteran suffering from severe PTSD and pain. Looking back, it was a very challenging time to open, where we thought we had a competitive advantage by only being the one delivering in Oceanside. We soon were flooded by 11 storefronts in Vista, who, since cannabis was deemed essential, all got the green light to open delivery around the same time. Despite the fierce competition from storefronts and multiple deliveries, we persevered. We worked tirelessly, revisited our strategies, and honed our skills while maintaining commitment to exceptional customer service, and efforts, and our efforts paid off. We recently celebrated our successful, successful fourth year in business. Med Leaf had known firsthand Medleaf had known firsthand how to compete and win in a saturated market. Well, enough about me and George. On the next slide, me and George, on the upper right, that is Diana Mendez. She has been my store manager and right-hand woman for the past three and a half years and hopefully will be joining us as our general manager in Costa Mesa. On the bottom right, that's Mike Asia. He's our inventory manager who is excited to help us open this store and handle our inventory and compliance in Costa Mesa. Next slide. Our motto from day one has been employee empowerment overall. We have been truly blessed to have excellent employees. At Medleaf, we offer great benefits such as living wages, plus pool tips, 40 hours of PTO, and you get your birthday off paid, 401K healthcare, or sorry, health and fitness credit, and paid volunteer time. Next slide. Over the past four years, we've had the pleasure of hands-on volunteering with multiple nonprofits. We look forward to bringing the same community service commitment to Costa Mesa, starting with the Assistance League, which was kind enough to write us a letter in support of our storefront. Next slide. Community outreach. On April 29th, Team Medleaf canvassed the surrounding neighborhood where we collectively had great conversations with people excited about the new look of our site, employment inquiries, and most of all, those local discounts, which yes, we will be honoring a Costa Mesa resident discount code. On May 9th, the Team Medleaf hosted a Come Eat Medleaf at Italia's Pizza Kitchen. The turnout was slim, but everyone in attendance, including the patrons, were very kind and supportive. Before I conclude my portion, I leave you with this PSA. Go eat at Italia's Pizza Kitchen. It's delicious. Thank you for your time. I'm now going to turn this over to Sean Maddox.
The slide before you provides an exterior view of the proposed site from Newport Boulevard. As you can see, the site is in dire need of overall facelift and rehabilitation. There's deferred maintenance on the site with outdated and peeling yellow paint, as well as landscaping that's been overlooked and left untouched for what looks like the past couple of years and maybe decades. Beyond paint and landscaping, the site also features a multitude of unused dilapidated vehicles that are vestiges of the previous auto-related businesses. Next slide. The proposed site improvements seek to breathe new life into this overlooked property. Improvements begin with a brand-new white and gray-themed paint scheme that updates the aesthetic of the entire exterior of the buildings onsite, as well as the monument sign. The mechanic shops will be converted to a retail space, which will improve the property's aesthetic along Newport Boulevard. Additional improvements include the removal of the dilapidated vehicles and an update of the site's landscaping. Lastly, subject to approval from the Arts Commission and coming back in front of Planning Commission, Medleaf is seeking to have a mural installed on the wall along the property line facing Newport Boulevard, which will immediately improve the overall aesthetic on this busy street. Next slide. This slide before you is the site plan. This site is ideally situated for a cannabis retail location with ingress from both Newport Boulevard and Fairview Road and egress to Newport Boulevard. The site is uniquely located to pull customers from two busy Costa Mesa thoroughfares. The site features over 38 parking spaces, including three handicap parking spaces, which far exceeds the 26 spaces required under code. The project also proposes to add a bike rack next to the retail entrance with sufficient availability to park four to five bikes, which would push the parking count to 39 based on the space credit for the bike rack. Next slide. Interior improvements include the transition of the mechanic shops into a 2,400-square-foot retail space. The interior features are pretty typical of a general cannabis retail storefront, which includes a single entrance controlled access lobby, which requires customers to be verified prior to entering the retail floor. The approximately 1,700-square-foot retail floor features a central flower bar and display shelving around the perimeter walls. The back-of-house limited-access area includes a break room, office, and secure storage room with a separate entrance/exit for vendors and incoming product shipments. Next slide, please. Last and always importantly, to site security proposed by the cannabis business. As a cannabis retailer, the site is proposing to have 24/7 security in addition to off-site closed-circuit TV monitoring. On-site guards will be provided by OneShield, who Medleaf has worked with for four years without incident at their Oceanside facility. Guards will be posted in the lobby, retail floor, as well as to provide roving patrols during hours of operations. Security enhancements extend to the exterior with improved site lighting through a professionally engineered photometric plan. Medleaf has worked with OneShield to develop a proactive approach towards site security and safety in Oceanside and we look forward to implementing that at the Newport Boulevard site to ensure operations maintain a positive impact on the surrounding community. Next slide, please. I'd like to thank the commissioners for their consideration of this conditional use permit, as well as to thank Michelle and staff for their hard work in putting together a professionally-prepared staff report. We kindly request the commissioners' vote to support staff's recommendation and will make ourselves available for any questions you may have about the proposed project.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Maddox. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Martinez? Or actually, let's start with Commissioner Rojas because I think he just came on first.
Just a pretty quick question. I mean, we've had applications come by and you're very close proximity to other shops that are nearby. So the same question I always ask, we want to make sure there's a variety of businesses there, et cetera, et cetera. But I just wanted to see, like, how do you guys plan on distinguishing yourself from your neighbors, you know, the businesses that are pretty close by, not too far away, but what's the variation and what can we consider?
I think one of the things that Medleaf has been forced to do very well that most retailers overlook is delivery, and I think it's an essential aspect of their business model, based off of being the first to market and delivery in North County San Diego and then being flooded with competition and higher-budget competition because of the amount of income that retail brings in and the amount of money that can be spent on things like weed maps and advertising. Medleaf has been very good at getting strategic with marketing and advertising and bringing in customers at lower acquisition costs, which is essential for delivery because it's a very costly aspect of the business. So their ability to thrive in delivery, I think, brings them an added advantage when a lot of the retailers who've already opened in Costa Mesa aren't even focusing on delivery. Most of them don't even have it yet. So to that extent, they've got a portion of the business which has been profitable in a market without retail. So the retail storefront is really almost an addendum and just something that allows them to service and interface with their customers firsthand. And it's something that they're building out. They have worked with Oceanside to get approval on a retail storefront as well. So developing the model to be retail-facing, but also having the supplement of a very successful delivery business is what sets them apart.
Fair enough. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Commissioner Martinez?
Yes, thank you. Since staff indicated that you don't own the parcel of the site itself, has the owner agreed to all the exterior improvements?
Yes.
Okay. At the, I guess, no. There's a tent on the Fairview roadside of the property, which is currently used by the car wash for, I think, some detailing work, whatever. Is that tent to remain since that's in the delivery area for the, for the new store? Or what's going to happen with that?
It's not necessarily in the delivery area. We do have 38 parking spaces. So I think final determinations on parking layouts and delivery areas is still being had. I would imagine that if the tent doesn't remain where it is, that it'll probably be relocated somewhere on the property if that's the ultimate decision. But to my knowledge, this is something that'll be worked out through building and planning in addition to kind of working out some of the security features as the final CBP with staff.
Okay. And then, last question. Are you open to either removing or providing an easement for ADA compliance for the sidewalks? Removing the trees or providing an easement?
So the easement's not within our power because we don't own the property and that's a discussion I think the city would have to have with the property owner. In terms of removal of the trees, I just think it's really premature for us to say whether or not it's something we'd be open to. It could be a very cost-prohibitive endeavor and given the overall scope of the project, just not something that we had anticipated.
For cost, just for the details, Mr. Yang, can you clarify what the cost of removing the trees would be?
So Commissioner Martinez, for, are you referring to the removal of just one tree?
Yeah. Let's go. And then they can multiply by four for the final mass.
It would depend on the species of tree, the size of the tree, and the overall health of the tree. But we're looking at probably between $500 to $1,000 per tree for removal. And you can do the math for the four trees.
And then plus replacement costs.
Replacement costs, once again, it would depend on the species of the tree that's been selected, the size. Once again, that could be around $500 to $1,000 per tree.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Commissioner Klepak? Okay. Vice Chair, Commissioner Andrade?
Yeah, we were asking earlier about the gate.
Yep.
Can you maybe expand on it? It looks like it wasn't required. There's not a separation there?
I mean, I think-
Since we're talking about accessibility?
Yeah, I think business prudence would suggest having a wall in between a competitor. Makes sense. I think beyond just the business competitive reasons, you also look at the potential use of our parking lot, unpermitted use of our parking lot, and cost to enforce that and prevent it, as well as having to monitor, you know, potential patients from another store and things of that nature. So I just think from an overall business standpoint, it makes sense. And I think that's the reasoning on our end.
And do you think your security guards, your 24-hour security guards from both parties can't mitigate that? Because again, we're talking about accessibility on a one-way direction.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's a tall ask and I think that it's one of those things that we're just, you know, it doesn't seem ideal to be sharing a potential exit with a competitor when they have their own lot with ingress and egress, to my understanding, on Newport Boulevard.
So it's not ideal to open up next to another dispensary, in other words?
When the site was chosen over three years ago and went through the planning process, we had no idea that a competitor would be there. And so it is not ideal, but we're also hoping that a competitor that was approved by this commission over two years ago and still hasn't opened might not open and we might be the only business there.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Anyone else? Jumping on to a previous question about the sidewalk, if you go to page 4 of 6 in your applicant letter, and audio/video, you can zoom in on this if you'd like. The rendering that you submitted as part of your application would insinuate that you were planning on taking the trees out because there are no trees in the sidewalk. And then the sidewalk also looks about five feet wider than it currently is. So I'd like to make heads or tails of what you're demonstrating here with this rendering.
Just an exterior rendering. I don't think that the renderer came out to the site to properly evaluate, but I don't think the plan was to remove or widen the sidewalk. You know, but for some of the discussions, I think we could be open to to a discussion of removal, but I think we'd want some type of a cap on cost just because the overall feasibility of the project.
Yeah, well, if we're talking about cap on cost, the driveway already has a ramp for ADA and then what's demonstrated here is that there is no actual ramp. It's just a curb that goes all the way around. So I'm trying to make heads or tails of that. So I'm happy to hear your thoughts.
I'd imagine that any ramp that was there would stay there and not be removed.
Okay. Let me thumb through the agenda real quick, Mr. Maddox. I wish I was a little bit more organized where I could just dot it all out, but I like turning pages.
No worries.
I'd like to go back to what Commissioner Rojas was asking earlier that is an extension of, Commissioner Zick actually asked this question first when we started hearing cannabis items. It was, what is your competitive advantage? And I've said it before publicly, I think it's one of the best questions that's been asked up here. The practical aspect of why here and why in this current market? And I would argue particularly why situated between two competing retail uses?
Yeah, and I'd kind of go back to my answer to Commissioner Andrade of when this site was chosen, there was no understanding that there would be competing uses on either side. Again, the hope is that there might only be one use, but as the commission seen throughout Costa Mesa, there is a proliferation of cannabis stores. When the ordinance was originally designed and adopted by City Council, there was a free-market and competitive-market approach to it and we appreciate that and the opportunity to be here because of that and, you know, firmly believe that based off of our advantages in delivery, we'll be able to be successful at this site.
Thank you. How long, how long ago did you actually complete your application before you got a hearing? Or how long has it been since you actually got a notice to proceed to us?
I know the pre-application went in, it seems like around three years ago. I think the final notice to proceed was issued sometime back in March, I believe.
March of this year?
I'd let staff correct me on that.
Yeah, I'm getting an idea. Okay. I just wanted to know the timeline of all this. Okay. All right. I think that's all. Yes, Commissioner Zick?
Thank you. Well, there've been a couple of good questions that have now prompted some questions in my mind. I appreciate your answer to the question about why here in the middle of two other competitors. I understand that. Did it ever, did you ever consider, once it became quite clear that there were two competitors on either side, to withdraw your application? And if not, why not?
I'll defer to some extent to ownership, but I can say from my experience in working with this team, a lot of the owners are Orange County residents. They did open their original store in Oceanside and it was their dream to open a location in Orange County, which is closer to home, that they can operate. So to withdraw the application would have been giving up on that dream. And I think I've seen firsthand in their perseverance in Oceanside that that's not something that they're willing to do and that they're confident and they will bet on themselves. You know, they struggled multiple years before getting a delivery to profitability. And I think, again, given the opportunity, knowing these guys, that they're going to bet on themselves. So I would say that's partially part of the reason that they didn't withdraw, but I'll also defer to ownership.
Hi, Commissioner. So in Oceanside, they said that we would never get recreational when we were medicinal. George and I did everything we could, self-lobby, to talk to whoever we had to talk to, you know, made the case for recreational. And after, I believe, a year and a half, we were able to overcome that and get recreational. I think it was a month later Vista just got recreational. So we like to say we paved the way for that. They said we would never get a storefront in Oceanside and that Oceanside would never do storefronts. So after three and a half years now of us self-lobbying, talking to City Council members, talking to staff, you know, bringing report after report of why this would be a good thing and why we've been great operators in their city and why they should expand. We are now months away from getting the green light to go ahead and open a storefront in Oceanside. So my husband and I and our team, we are tenacious. This is our dream. This is our passion. Like I said, my brother's a U.S. Army veteran. So this is personal to me, being that we were able, we went to Oceanside for a reason because, you know, of the veteran population that's down there, but we really wanted to bring it back home. So this has been, I think I talked to, I know she's no longer here, but Nancy Nguyen. I think the first time I talked to her was November of 2020. So this wasn't something that we just wanted to give up on.
So let me ask a follow-up question.
Sure.
And it's a little-
It's okay.
Trying to clarify, maybe a little pointed. Had you known there was another application next door, would you have still submitted an application for this location?
Yes, because we know how to compete and win.
Got it. I like that answer better than the other answer. Okay. So now I'm looking at this diagram and I've got some troubles. And I'll first ask my question to staff because the trouble that I have is, to me, this represents certainly an artist's conception, but if I'm buying something and this is a picture of what I'm expected to get, I'm going to be expecting to get this. And what we seem to be learning is that we won't be getting a big wide sidewalk like this. There's going to be a skinny sidewalk that's existing with a couple of big trees. And so my question to staff is, when normally an applicant submits a landscaping plan as part of their overall development, how did you consider reconciling the site condition to this artist's rendition? That is kind of beautiful, but unrealistic?
Commissioner Zick, I think you'll find in many of our cannabis applications, this question has come up.
question has come up before as well. They take a lot of artistic liberties, in part because they are just conceptual. I did request that they go back and take another look at their landscape plan and make sure it aligns with the renderings. They did go back and make some improvements, but yes, there is definitely room for more improvements.
I'm pretty good at Photoshop, so I recognize some of this stuff. The existing condition, which was the picture just before that, showed a large two-story, looks like a tilt-up structure behind, and that doesn't show in the rendering. So this is a very beautiful picture of what this site could look like, but won't look like. And of course, that bothers me just a little bit. But I think back to the questions that started with Commissioner Martinez. I'm trying to understand what it is that we intend to do to ensure that the sidewalk in front of this development is going to, at a minimum, meet ADA. What is it that we are going to do to ensure that occurs?
If so, I'd like to chime in a little bit. Michelle and I looked into this a little bit before the hearing, and there are some provisions which talk about and speak towards off-site improvements. What that usually comes in conjunction with new development or development with 50% or more improvements. Neither of those does this project meet that category. So this project by code doesn't require off-site improvements, improvements that are off the property. In the past, there have been plenty of applicants that have provided these off-site improvements in various ways, whether it be widened sidewalk or more landscaping in the right-of-way, sometimes better bicycle amenities or what have you. They've been provided. In this situation, the applicant has not proposed any of those, and again, his application doesn't require it.
Okay, so setting this applicant aside, with all the effort that has gone on in the city, when it comes to walkability, and again, I'm kind of focused on the ADA aspect of this particular stretch of sidewalk, do we, the city, have any plan whatsoever to remedy a situation where we have a sidewalk that is not ADA compliant?
So I think that's definitely a better question to answer by our Public Works Department. This is Caltrans right-of-way, if I'm not mistaken. So there might be some coordination that goes along with them as well. But I'll leave this to the Public Works Director.
Director Seth Raman.
So this is not Caltrans right-of-way, it is city right-of-way, actually. The frontage road is owned by the city. So in situations like this, where we have to meet ADA requirements, we do, as I mentioned earlier, we look at measures that include either getting an easement from the property owner to go around these trees to provide us the ADA width, or we go with the process of removal of trees where needed to accommodate the required sidewalk. And we actually have a project that's coming down the road on Newport Boulevard. We're going to be doing a lot of roadway surface improvements and infrastructure improvements, and we are looking into things, you know, like that for this location.
Okay. I appreciate that answer, Mr. Maddox. I withdraw some of my criticism about your artistic rendering, but you do take some liberties that I'd suggest maybe you'd not do so much of next time.
Apologies, and you're blaming an architect for an artist's work, or sorry, an attorney for an artist's work. So I get it. I wish, you know, we had been more accurate, and I, like staff commented, seen a lot of these projects that look a lot prettier than they can ever feasibly been. So our apologies for anything that might have been misleading.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Zick and Mr. Maddox. On the heels of Commissioner Zick's question, if I could ask Director Seth Raman, if there was any contemplation about, and just theoretically, and not to put you on the spot, if we were contemplating an easement to satisfy ADA, would there be the possibility that it would start to encroach into the parking lot and not meet the minimum distance requirement for backup space in its current layout? I don't know if you have it in front of you to see, or if that's even a possibility.
So Chair Erath, when I looked at it before, I think, I think our city engineer son might have some recollection too, I think we could get that width without getting into the parking lot. We could accommodate that within the available space there behind the tree.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Looking at the site plan, I mean, it seems to, the way it's currently drawn, there seems to be ample space. That's, assuming that's within the public right-of-way. If so, then the conscription of an easement may not be necessary. But staff will have to look at that in terms of where the actual property line meets with the public right-of-way, and then we can make that determination if such an easement is required or not.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of the actual depth of the stalls, and if there was an easement that started to eat into that depth, what that would mean for backup space if they could continue to meet the minimum backup requirement. Ms. Huggan.
Yeah, Chair Erath, I believe that if there were to be an easement, which I don't think we can really get into at this point, the property owner's not here, that it would eat into some of the landscaping space and not actually the parking stalls. And in this case, they are overparted. So if, but I don't believe that they would actually lose any parking based on an easement. It could be something like two feet, especially if they're removing the trees. So it really depends on the path forward. There's options.
Okay. I only, yes, Director Seth Raman.
Sorry, Chair Erath. Yeah, as Ms. Huggan mentioned, there is a berm, landscape berm behind. So we would get into that area, not into the parking lot.
Okay. Yeah, and I was only going to say from personal experience, I know that sometimes it comes down to a matter of inches throwing parking off. That's been my personal experience. So, all right. Thank you all. Anyone else?
Mr. Maddox, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. That's Jim.
Mr. Chair, this is Jim Fitzpatrick for the applicant, if I might. One thing to keep in mind here is that we do have a $28,000 traffic impact fee. So a great reason to support this project is to provide some access to funds for the city for this problem that will exist in the future until we solve for. As far as considering easements, and I hope nobody's considering putting a condition on tonight, just know that this is a complicated property. When you start to bring in Mesa Waters' needs and where those pipes go and the kind of, the design and some of the presenting issues, such considerations of removing the trees at the requirement of the applicant or granting an easement where we don't have a property owner in a very challenging, complex area, I would encourage the commission not to do that this evening.
Thank you for your thoughts. It kind of begs the question if we have the right personnel or information in front of us currently. So, yes, Commissioner Andrade.
I just had a clarifying question. So this whole conversation of the easement, is that in the effort to maintain the trees?
Yes.
Okay. Which is the appropriate thing to do, as we are Tree City. A commission up here frequently denies all mature tree removals. Living on West Side, it's really, really hot. We would love to have the West Side also lined with beautiful trees that cool our areas. So really exciting to hear that there are workarounds to maintain the mature trees, which I'm sure has taken decades to get to that level.
Yeah, and without forecasting any discussion that's going to follow this, I would just be under the assumption that if there was any discussion of cutting down mature trees, that there would be an equivalent planting of those trees, either singularly or in bulk through multiple trees. Is that Director Seth Raman?
That's correct, Chair.
Right. But from what we learned in parks is that, right, the planting of those, replanting of those trees is normally a baby tree, which will take another so many decades for it to mature, to actually serve its purpose to the local community, to make it more walkable. And again, as a West Side Costa Mesa resident that lived in this area, it is heavily trafficked by foot, I should say. So I think the effort to maintain them as much as possible, I mean, we've had multiple conversations about trees and parking lots in the past, so it would be great to make our best effort to maintain those, because its replacement is not parallel, is not comparable.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrade. And I know you have previous experience on parks, so you bring a lot of expertise. So, Commissioner Martinez.
Thank you. Is there, I don't know if I misremembered something, is there a required setback from the sidewalk to the parking area? Or is there like a landscape requirement to provide distance between the sidewalk and the parking area? I'm trying to remember if that's a thing, or if I'm just making that up.
Commissioner Martinez, you are remembering correctly, but what we have here is a site plan that was approved with legal non-conforming landscaping setbacks.
Okay. So if, what am I trying to ask? If we do, let's say, the easement process goes on, that would further reduce the landscape area between the sidewalk and the parking, does that make it more non-conforming? Or because that is already the non-conformance, are we fine to do that?
So Commissioner Martinez, I think it is really premature to be talking about an easement when we don't know if the trees are healthy, we haven't studied the trees, you know, and I'm not familiar with Public Works' plan for those improvements along Newport Boulevard. But if there were to be an easement created to save those trees, that would be to preserve healthy trees and also to provide a safe path of travel. So that might fall under public health and safety, in which case, the non-conformance could be made more non-conforming. But again, I really think we're talking about an easement when we don't have the information we need to even determine if that's appropriate at all.
That's fair. And then
So if I could, Commissioner Martinez, sorry, I think, just for the sake of moving the discussion along, let's hold off on any discussion of easement till we come to the end, when it comes back up to the DAAS. I'm just kind of putting two and two together, that we're kind of talking around the same theme, just collectively. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else before we move along? Commissioner Andrade.
Yeah. I really love the highlight that you guys had about the benefits, cost of living, what is it, compensation and all of that. Can you tell us a little bit more about your recruitment process, how you're going to engage Costa Mesa applicants maybe to be employed, you know, now that you're, and I believe you guys are local to Oceanside coming over here, your manager's coming from Oceanside over here, like, it would be great to kind of know how you guys are looking to operationalize Costa Mesa, you know, offering opportunities for employment for Costa Mesa residents.
Yeah, 100%. So obviously, what took us down to Oceanside was Medleaf, but my husband and I, we own a real estate company here, and we used to just live right here off of Jamboree and the 405. So our recruitment, what we're planning on doing as far as recruitment goes, is we are planning on reaching out, putting ads on Indeed. We're planning on reaching out to our network as far as other people who have worked in the cannabis space here in Costa Mesa and in Santa Ana, making sure that we can bring in talent, and then also doing a job fair on-site. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Unless anyone else has any additional questions, we'll go ahead and move things along. Ms. Sanawi and Mr. Maddox, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We may ask you to come back up later on if we have additional questions. All right, we'll go ahead and open for public comments. If you'd like to speak to this item and you're within chambers, you're welcome to come to either podium. You'll have three minutes to speak, and at the one-minute mark, you hear a little chime, and then the microphone will turn off automatically. So does anyone in chambers wish to speak on this item? We can queue up on both sides, if you would, please. Yes, ma'am, we'll start with you. Unless you want to start with him.
No, it's fine. I'll start.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. He said wait for the ding.
That'll be at the one-minute mark. Let me reset. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Dinat Mendez, and I have been a part of the cannabis industry for over seven years. Currently, I serve as the store manager at Medleaf Delivery in Oceanside. I'm excited to announce that upon the approval of the Costa Mesa storefront, I will be stepping in to the role of general manager for this new location. This is a significant milestone, particularly as a Latina woman in the cannabis industry, and I am committed to working diligently to ensure the success of this store. I'd like the opportunity to express my gratitude to the Medleaf team. Their belief in my abilities and dedication to the cannabis industry has been a driving force in my career. Their mentorship over the past three and a half years has not only honed my skills, but also instilled in me the confidence to turn my passion into a successful career. One of the aspects of my work that I truly cherish is the opportunity to interact with our vendors and support a dynamic sales team. This role has allowed me to channel my passion for the industry into tangible results, and I'm excited to continue doing so with Medleaf and Costa Mesa. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Mike Acia. I'm the inventory manager at Medleaf Oceanside. My current responsibilities include inventory management, metric compliance, data analysis, and marketing, including, in addition to helping out with the day-to-day operations of the business. Prior to working at Medleaf, I spent over 10 years in executive restaurant management, overseeing operations and marketing. During that time, I helped open five new retail locations for several different companies, including Whole Foods Market, Viewpoint Brewing Company, and Bushfire Kitchen. I'm very excited to apply my previous experience opening retail locations and continue to grow my career in the cannabis industry as the inventory and compliance manager for Medleaf Costa Mesa. Thank you for your time and consideration tonight, and a very special thank you to Karen and George for the opportunity to start a career in this industry when no one else would give me the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello, Council. My name is Connor Lockman, and I have worked with the Medleaf team for several years as a sales representative on behalf of several cannabis brands. And I just wanted to go on record to say that I have loved working with them. As far as, you know, you meet all kinds of characters working in this industry, and I've rarely dealt with people who have this much integrity and class. Like, a lot of the brands I've worked with are literally sometimes a mom and pop or a brother, sister, you know, like small businesses. And I've been lucky enough to represent a portfolio of a lot of brands at one time. And when you pay your bills on time, when you do what you say you're going to do, and things like that, which, things that, you know, people take for granted, but really makes a huge difference to people like myself and all the different brands that I represent. And I just want to just say, you know, I would love to have Medleaf and Costa Mesa. I live in Orange County myself. You know, I've always covered a large territory, but some of the best people I've worked with, and Costa Mesa will be very lucky to have operators like these guys. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. I will say, we'll move along to Zoom and telephone. If you're on Zoom, use the raised hand option. If you're joining the meeting on your phone, you'd like to speak, please press star nine. Anna, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Banning, you may provide your public comment.
Banning.
All right. Thank you, Planning Commission, for your time. I've worked in Orange County for nearly 10 years in the cannabis industry, trying to improve the image of cannabis and work with partners who always put their best foot forward when it comes to advancing the industry in a positive direction. Of my 10 years in the industry, I've worked with Medleaf and their entire team for four years. I can say without a doubt, the team at Medleaf is some of the hardest-working, was genuine people I've ever had the pleasure of working with, and hold the same values I previously listed when it comes to advancing our community for the better. Tacko Karen sentiment, Medleaf's first license came online in Oceanside during an extremely difficult time, which was COVID. The landscape was competitive, the cost of entry was extremely high. Being a locally-owned business, they did everything in their power to not only survive in a difficult situation, but thrive. Donors at Medleaf always made attempts to improve their community, whether it was a beach cleanup, being active with veterans and helping with mental health, improving areas where real estate has been an eyesore, and educating the public on the benefits of cannabis, and so on. Another sole intention is to serve their community with the best intentions and ensure safe and legal access for licensed and tested cannabis products, as well as continue to drive on improving the lives of everyone in their neighborhoods, the same way they did with their first location in Oceanside. In an industry where vendors are having a hard time getting hard time getting paid, Medleaf has always ensured to pay vendor bills on time, along with any relevant taxes to the city and state. Ensuring good business practices and maintaining high standards helps us get our industry out of the dark ages and progress in a new era where cannabis is viewed in a positive light. The team at Medleaf are the ones to do just that. I look forward to hopefully seeing Medleaf open up soon. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Banning. Anyone else, Anna?
Tiffany Sowersby, you may provide your public comment.
Ms. Sowersby, welcome.
Hi, good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Tiffany Sowersby. I'm a resident of Costa Mesa, and I'm here on behalf of Sunderstorm. We're a licensed brand that has been in the cannabis, medical, and recreational space as of 2016. I personally worked with the Medleaf team and Karen for over four years. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay. Did you get the beginning of it? I'm sorry, you guys, it just said unmute for a second.
We, we did.
You did, okay, great.
You can continue, I've got you at 2:30 left.
Okay, great. Okay, so the Medleaf team, they're very truly professional, they're easy to work with, they take pride in providing compliant products, and have always been current with accounts payable to their vendors. This is something that you don't honestly see from many current operators in the space. Medleaf has always been on time and very dependable. They also do various community outreach product, projects, and I look forward to seeing those in my hometown of Costa Mesa. Sunderstorm's family of brands is thrilled to hear about the licensing efforts made by Medleaf. Personally, we understand the rigorous process, countless hours, and additional investments it takes to secure a valid license. Furthermore, we could attest to the massive undertaking of maintaining compliance and active status of said license. We appreciate hopeful retail partners like Medleaf for undertaking such a fee in order to process the sale of cannabis goods like ours to eligible public. Sunderstorm and each of its in-house brands would be honored and guaranteed partner of the Medleaf retail location upon the receivable of this active BCC license in Costa Mesa. Having said so, we iterate full confidence in participating with Medleaf as a vendor. We take pride in our own efforts to stay compliant and available to the public, and therefore are able to provide consistent quality inventory to our partners. When Medleaf opens their doors as a state-licensed Costa Mesa retailer, Sunderstorm looks forward to executing effective business together.
Did we lose you again?
That's it.
Oh, okay, all right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Sellsby. All right, Anna, anyone else?
Adam Lawton, you may provide your public comment.
Mr. Lawton.
Good evening, thank you for having me. I just wanted to speak on behalf of, of Medleaf there. I'm with Goldflora Corporation. We're a vertically-integrated cannabis company. Our corporate offices are right in Costa Mesa. I had the pleasure of meeting George, Dianette, and Karen about three and a half years ago, where the vertical end of our, of our cannabis company, for the district, for the distribution end of things, I went down and presented some products to those guys, and we agreed that it would be a good suit for the customer base that they had. So right from the beginning, I was intrigued with these guys on how the customer was the most important thing that they were concerned about, and getting to know them over the three and a half years that we've been working together, it's stayed that way, and it was, it was customer over profit in my eyes, when I looked at those guys, and they, they really, they really struggled over the years, however, they always kept the customer first, and I just wanted to let the board know that these, these guys are fantastic, and we look forward to, you know, working with them if they are granted a license, license here in Costa Mesa as well, so thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone on-
No, there is not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Anna. Anyone on telephone?
No, there is not.
All right, thank you. Go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing, and ask my colleagues if you have any further questions of the applicant. Commissioner Rojas.
I don't know if I have questions for the applicant, or if it's for this side of the room, but mainly what I'm wondering is, you know, I, I was just looking at the pictures of the, or the video, the maps of the, of the area, the location, and I'm still stuck with these trees and sidewalk thing, and I don't know that we have enough information to make a decision. First of all, thank you to the applicants. Has nothing to do with the applicants at all. This is, again, on this side of the room. You answered my question satisfactorily, I appreciated that, and I'm good with it, but what are we going to do about that? If I looked at, I looked at the tree well in the edge of the street, and I believe Commissioner Martinez measured it at two feet, and I look at it, it is very narrow for somebody to walk, to go by in a wheelchair if they were on there, and it's also broken pavement, not a very safe area if somebody had to go by, you know, in a wheelchair or whatnot, but then I look at the other side, and it, some of it even backs up into the parking lot, you would have to eat in it, so what are we going to do about it? I know we talked about it in circles, but what are our options? Is it our responsibility? Is it, do we put it on the city? I don't want to reach into their pocket and have them start spending money on things that unfairly falls on them because there's a tree there that they didn't plant. So what do we do? What are our options on that, guys? I don't, I'm not sure.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Applicant team, if you'd like to take a, a swing at that, you're welcome. Here are my thoughts, though. I think when we bring it back up here, we can discuss this a little bit more in detail, but I'm, I hear what you're saying. Okay, okay, anyone else? Questions for applicant? Mr. Maddox and team, you're welcome to answer some of that. I, I think you've gleaned, hopefully, enough information to see where, where things currently are before we bring it back up to the deas.
Thank you. Yeah, understand the issue, appreciate staff's attention to it, understand the importance of bikeability, you know, transportation, walkability in the city of Costa Mesa, you know, uncallously, I think cost is always an important issue or consideration, as was mentioned by the voice of Jim earlier, so I'm sorry for putting that on you guys. There is traffic-impact fees, I think, in the ballpark of $30,000, which could be allocated to assisting with this. I think, you know, as an applicant, we'd be willing to contribute something, we just don't know what that ballpark figure would be in the overall course of the scope, you know, but if it's a nominal, well, obviously, it's not going to be nominal, right? We were talking about the removal of trees alone, I think we were getting up to $10,000, something like that seems feasible, and something that could be handled in the scope of the project. If we start getting up in the, you know, 20, 30, 40, $50,000 to redo the sidewalk and expand of those types of things, I just think that it's really hard to digest at that level with just having this bond on us this morning. But, you know, as applicants and wanting to do what's right by the city, I think we do, we would be willing to contribute, I guess, up to a limit to assist with it. We can't speak behalf on the property owner and what we can do on easements, but we would definitely do our best to lobby and work with him if that were a requirement of getting this project through building and planning as we went through that process.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Maddox, I appreciate it. Anyone else? Questions for applicant? All right, thank you, Mr. Maddox.
Yeah, just something to consider, right? I mean, part of your application was-
Well, if, just real, just cautionary tale, if it's anything about ideas for how to get around this, let's wait till we bring it back up to us.
Sure.
Okay, I didn't want to cut you off, Commissioner Andrade, I just, I'm trying to think. Okay. Mr. Maddox, thank you, appreciate it. Colleagues, any further questions for, actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Maddox, do you have any closing comments?
I mean, just to echo the sentiments that were brought up by public comment, I've worked with a lot of groups in the city of Costa Mesa, you guys have seen my face here a lot of times. Very few of the groups have I had the tenure that I've had with Medleaf. I intimately remember them coming to me almost seven years ago with this dream of what they were doing. I remember the, the first call I got about fees, and, you know, how hard it was going to be for them to, to follow through on their dream, and I've watched them persevere for seven years now in a very tough market, and I've watched them be first-in-class operators in an area that, I think I've said in front of this commission before, delivery is not profitable for the majority of the population in this, in this market, and I've watched them be, I think, the best operators that I've seen. They're the few success cases of delivery operators that I've worked with, and I think that's a testament to their hard work. I've interacted with their staff, you guys have heard from their staff and vendors, and, and I do think that they would be an extreme benefit to the Costa Mesa cannabis community, and I know that they would do anything and everything they can to uphold their name and reputation that they've established in Oceanside, and I think that the city would be at a loss to not have them as operators in comparison to even some of the groups that I've brought in front of you guys, so that's all I got to say.
All right, thank you, Mr. Maddox. It's nice seeing you again. All right, colleagues, do you have any further questions for staff before we move along? Commissioner Martinez.
Just one, and about the trees. How many new trees are required for, under the exterior tenant improvements as part of this application? Staff report, page seven.
So as part of this application, the onsite improvement that we've conditioned, let's see, we had two 24-inch box-sized trees, four 25-gallon, and I believe, three 15-gallon. And that's for onsite improvements, because they had a lot of landscaped area that hadn't actually been improved.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Anyone else? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and before we start jumping in for a motion, perhaps we have a little discussion amongst ourselves, now that we can speak a little bit more freely. I'm happy to kick things off, but also happy to hear anyone's thoughts if they're chomping at the bit. Commissioner Zick.
Let's get my thoughts out of the way on this. So I look at the picture that's on page three, the, I guess, the current condition. To me, the trees are beautiful. If there was a way to keep them, I think that'd be great. I think as close as they are to traffic represents a safety problem to vehicles. You generally don't like to have immovable objects that close to a traffic lane, so from that standpoint, if the trees were removed, I don't think I'd shed a tear, but they're beautiful trees. The last thing I think I'm interested in is trying to extract money from the applicant to deal with these trees when it's not their problem. I have a bit of an allergic reaction going after people that have more money, just because they're there and they want something from us. I don't think it's fair to ask them to contribute anything towards the cost of dealing with these trees. I think it's entirely a city responsibility. Mr. Seth Raman has suggested, and Mr. Yang has suggested, there may be a way to deal with the current landscape buffer and the trees, and save them, and that's all good stuff. They have to go out and look at it, consider their alternatives. But in terms of what's before us tonight, I'm not interested in trying to force this applicant to do anything or commit anything with regard to those trees. If we can save them, great, if we can't save them, I'm okay with that too. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Rojas.
I do want to support what Commissioner Zick said. That's exactly where I was going with it, is I don't want to burden the applicant with this. It's something that I think the city is, and I just wanted to support that in agreement.
Vice Chair.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Zick as well. This, I, I love that we're spending so much time at Planning Commission talking about sidewalks and trees, and I think that the fact that getting around by, on foot or by bike around the city, you don't notice when you're driving, but when you're trying to get around on foot and bike, you realize, wow, I'm an afterthought here, and I think it's absolutely something the city should be aggressively pursuing, especially when it doesn't even meet ADA standards, and you can't get a wheelchair by. And I think we should prioritize places where people are already trying to get around walking. I don't think a lot of people are trying, not to say that it shouldn't be improved here, but to Commissioner Zick's point, like all of these retail cannabis proposals, the, the sites there, the buildings there, swapping out a tenant, it's a new business, so, so putting the burden on them doesn't make any sense to me. If this was a new project where there's a complete redevelopment, and there were public improvement requirements, where they're going to be redoing a new landscape strip, that would make sense to me, but a lot of this is on us as the city. We have 100 and something feet across that trench that we decided to build a few decades ago, and we realized, well, we got two feet to walk by, and that's on us, we've shot ourselves in the foot. If, if they're willing to, it's in their interest, I think, to beautify that and make it more walkable and pleasant and, and safe and comfortable for people of all ages and abilities to get around, that's great, but I don't, I'm not interested in, in trying to leverage them to get those things.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. Anyone else?
Yeah, well, I would, yeah, that's, and this is where I was going to go earlier, is completely understand that this is not a new project, right, but this is a prime strip of our city, right? Heavily trafficked, like, this is not a, I don't know, any, any, just any old location, right? This is right out of the freeway, so I don't think we need to short-sell ourselves, like, this is prime location, and we heard we have a very tenacious applicant, which I love that passion, and they also offered opportunities, you know, it was great to see the collaborative that they have with other, you know, public, I mean, nonprofit and public organizations, so, you know, if there's an, you know, they're willing to use some of the, the public trend, the, what is it, the traffic, the traffic survey portion of investment towards this, so why not take an opportunity where this is a, looking to be a true partner with the city to help address a very, an oversight granted by our city with, I'm sure, budget limitations, hasn't been able to go in this right particular project, but they're willing to come here. I think, you know, it was great to hear that they are definitely open and flexible to take him on that offer, so, I mean, I think, why not, why not partner? Public-private partnerships are some of the most effective ways to address limitations that, that communities have, so I wouldn't want to lose on a great opportunity, since we have such a dedicated, community-focused applicant.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Commissioner Martinez?
Yeah, so just to maybe wrap things up, I think what I would want to look for in my motion, in, in, well, any motion, since I'm the one who originally brought this up, is that, you know, we do the normal things, and in addition, request that staff work with the property owner and the applicant to either get an easement in order to build a sidewalk, or initiate a Class I or Class II tree removal, which, to my understanding, would be of no cost to this, this planning applicant or to the property owner, and the cost would be borne by the city for a Class I or a Class II tree removal, which this would count as because of ADA compliance. So that, I think that hopefully resolves everyone, since applicant wouldn't pay if the trees were to be removed. We would still get a lot more trees based on the last question I asked. We're well on our way to the tree replacement ratio of three to one with the nine new trees in this application, if the tree were to be removed, and staff could work with them and see if we can preserve those trees for this, if, if an easement is granted, and let's, staff work this out at the staff level. So I think that, just to add on to the eventual motion.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Vice Chair.
I'm not sure I follow. What, what is, if the city is to remove the trees at some point, what does that have to do with this application and this applicant? What would it, what would be added, what would be an example of what would be added to the motion? So just the, the city would initiate its, the city itself, or the planning division, could initiate a tree removal request, and we were just requesting that the division as part of this, as part of this motion, initiate that request if an easement, for example, is not granted. So not exactly all to do with this application, but we're just tacking that on, and we're saying, we'd like to increase ADA access in the city, please work on this, since it's right next to this property that we just looked at.
Good, okay, thank you, Commissioner Martinez, Vice Chair. Commissioner Klepak, thoughts?
Yeah, I'll say something about the trees. I, I lean on the side of this not being the problem of the tenant, they're not even the owner of the property. I think there's lots of ideas that could be had, there could be the sidewalk, you know, behind the trees, it's not such a bad idea to have immovable objects separating traffic from sidewalks, so there's some opportunities there, but I, I don't think that's something that should be borne by this tenant.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Klepak. I'll go ahead and finish things out- I'll go ahead and finish things out before we move on, in saying that, where's the Parks Commission when you need them about trees? Joking aside, I think we had a very intellectual academic discussion about trees, something that has very little or nothing to do with this particular application. I can bring it back to the fact and finding that fall within our purview, and saying that I feel fairly confident that this project does not conform to one of the primary findings, which is land use 1.1, which is a mix and balance of opportunities. I think the concentration and density of real cannabis retailers in this area and would-be retailers in this area is what would be considered an overconcentration, and finding that there is a lack of a mixture of commercial goods and services that continues to ensue within this particular corner of Newport Boulevard, so it is trending, at least in terms of the general plan, in the wrong direction. I think that I feel fairly confident in making a motion to deny this project in its current form, simply because there is a lack of information as far as easements go. So, if anyone has a reservation about, well, if we had an easement, we could do X, Y, and Z, well, that's kind of above our pay grade. And I think that if there was a governing body to decide this, it should probably be the City Council, but as far as the information we have in front of us, I just, I just really don't think it's there. So, I'll go ahead and state my motion in denying planning application 21-28 for a conditional use permit to operate a retail cannabis storefront business with delivery located at 2285 Newport Boulevard, also known as Medleaf. And is there a second? It's not doing it. It says motions closed on the panel state. Oh, there we go. Okay. I think I've pretty much shared my thoughts. I think that if there is a way to approve this, again, it's beyond us. We're not the one who's going to be deciding easements, particularly if the owner of the property isn't here. So, if there are any issues with trees, pedestrian, ADA compliance, any kind of transportation-related issues, I think we can send that along, not to, not to kick the can down the road, but we simply don't have what we need to approve this project under one of the three major findings that we're supposed to make. So, that's my, that's my thought. Commissioner Andrade?
Yeah, I'll support the motion based on land use policy 1.1 and 6.15.
Okay, all right. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion or make an alternate motion? Commissioner Zick?
Yeah, so, I'm going to offer a substitute motion that we find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act per sequel guidelines, and approve this planning application subject to the conditions of approval. I'll elaborate if there's a second.
Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Rojas?
Yeah, so, anything having to do with these trees and this easement concept and ADA and all that whole discussion, to me, is irrelevant to whether or not this application should be approved or not approved. I think it should be approved because it is compliant with our city's ordinance for For anybody that has watched these cannabis applications in front of us, and I think Mr. Maddox is probably one of many, they know I don't like cannabis. I wish Measure Q had never been on the ballot. I wish we had done a much better job with the ordinance upfront. We didn't. We didn't put a cap on. We didn't have separation requirements. We just said, let them go, and that's what you did. You played by every rule that we, the city, put out there. Overconcentration is a concept that came about when people started to wake up and said, wait a minute, 60-plus applications? I thought these were going to be over, over there and, and over there, where I couldn't see them. No, they're going to be right next to you, where you are going to see them. 60 of them throughout the city. Well, we changed that number. There's a cap, 30, you know, we get all that. There's only a few places these can go in the city because of the other separation requirements that were in the ordinance. So, it shouldn't come as a shock to anybody that we're going to have cannabis stores next to each other. I don't like it one bit, but you're entitled to open a business next to another cannabis I also suspect that if we don't approve this, you're going to be in front of City Council anyway, and I think the prudent thing is to do the job that we're here to do, and that's how I feel.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Rojas, would you like to speak as your, as a second?
I do. I agree with what Commissioner Zick said, and you guys know me, I've always been concerned about overconcentration and whatnot and land use 1.1, but again, I asked that question directly earlier, and I was satisfied with the answer, where there is a certain level of variability, and the applicant has met what I believe is the necessary requirements for us to approve it, so I will.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Does anyone else wish to speak to the substitute motion? Yeah, Commissioner Martinez?
So, with the motion as it stands, will, I guess it would be public work staff, still work towards improving ADA access on this, on this public right-of-way, on the sidewalk with the owner and the, you know, with all the positives that come with it? Will you still work towards improving ADA access?
From the standpoint of my motion, that's not included. It would be my sincere hope that the city goes out and does its job trying to make sidewalks safer and compliant with ADA, and if they work with a property owner, whether it's this property owner or other property owners, I think that's part of what the city responsibility is. So, to your point, Commissioner, I fully expect the city to go off and work on this. I don't expect to hold this applicant hostage to that work effort.
My question was actually directed towards public work staff. I apologize, Commissioner, but Mr. Yang?
So, yes, Commissioner Martinez and also to Commissioner Zick, as Mr. Seth Raman previously alluded to, we do have a project on Newport Boulevard. This will be something that our staff will be considering and put into full consideration with respect to the sidewalk and ADA access.
Is that a project for this budget year, or when is the Newport Boulevard project?
It's currently in design, and design is nearly finished. Upon the completion of the designs, the staff would go ahead with, with construction, with a public bid opening, but in reference, the staff can go back and reassess that area.
Okay, that's great. That practically answers all my three questions. Thank you. Oh, actually, I have one more comment related to the other commission, the Arts Commission, the mural. I'm not, I'm going to support the substitute motion, but I am opposed to the requirement that the mural come back to the Planning Commission, because it's not our job, I don't think. I think if we wanted to, we could just say, the mural will not have any of the cannabis elements that are required in our ordinance. I think that would be a lot easier and would not require it to come back to us. However, I will still support the motion as is. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Anyone else? Commissioner Andrade?
Just to clarify what, what you shared, Mr. Yang, so, the city would have to reprioritize the order of that Newport Boulevard project to address the issue for this particular location? Is that something you guys would do?
So, Commissioner Andrade, so, it's not reprioritized? We'll just assess. Staff will go back and look at the location and see if it's possible to do the sidewalk. The thing is that our staff would need to go out there and make the assessment to make sure that these, if this is a distinct possibility to do.
Yeah, yeah, because I know that the work that you do is quite detailed, right? Safe accessibility for crosswalk for kids, to go into schools, to playgrounds, so it makes me very uncomfortable to have to, like, prioritize the sidewalk for a dispensary, you know, and all the other major priorities that you guys are working on across our city to serve our community. So, thanks.
Okay, anyone else? All right, seeing none. Anna, if we could call the question for the substitute motion, which is, to my understanding, to approve staff recommendation as written. Is that correct, Commissioner Zick? All right.
That motion carries 5-2 with Commissioner Andrade and Chair Erath voting no.
All right, thank you, Anna. That decision is final unless appealed to City Council within seven days. Thank you. I see there is no old business or new business, which brings us to departmental reports, starting with Mr. Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No reports from Public Works. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir, and thank you for your financers earlier. Appreciate it. Development Services report, Director Dropkin.
No reports tonight, Chair.
All right, thank you. City Attorney report, Mr. Preziosi.
No report, Chair Erath.
All right, thank you, and thank you all for joining us. We'll now adjourn. Thank you.